I'd like to make a motion that we go out of executive session and come back into the regular meeting.
Second. Announce the time, we're back in the regular meeting.
Uh, eight, I have, what's the exact time? Eight fifteen.
Okay, we're back into regular meeting.
Okay, so, we talk about some resolutions, the stuff we talked about in the, uh... We use the same numbers, so... Resolution, the board trust, uh, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees, uh... Have resolution number twenty-two dash oh-three-two.
We've already used that.
Is it oh-three-two?
Oh-three-two.
It's up to the next one?
We use the same number because it was tabled last meeting, so we use the same number. But it's not the next, it's not the next number.
That's the one that was tabled.
You know the same, is it W. Jim? Right? Same number we used last time. So this actually was tabled at the last meeting. Uh, Jefferson Township Board Trustees do hereby a hire Larry D. Metfield as our Code Enforcement Officer. Resolution reads the same, um... Any questions, statements, comments? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution two-two dash oh-three-two.
A second.
Okay, uh, we have no questions in there, so, uh, roll call vote for the Resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-two. Trustee McLaughlin is a yes. Trustee McGuire?
No.
Trustee back?
Yes.
Motion carries. Choose a look.
How many applications did we get for this position?
Two.
Two applications, how many interviews?
Two. Okay, next resolution, um... Resolution number two-two dash oh-three-three. Jefferson Township Board Trustees appoint Charles E. Cornell as a part-time Road Department employee. This again was tabled last meeting, so we use the same number. Any questions or comments? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-three.
A second.
Roll call vote, trustee McLaughlin is a yes. Trustee McGuire?
No.
And trustee back?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, for the record, how many people applied for this position?
I need to back up a little bit, I don't have any other...
Okay, how many, how many people were interviewed?
Two. Okay, the next resolution is also a tabled resolution from the previous meeting. And has the number... Oh-three-five. So, resolution number two-two dash oh-three-five. The Jefferson Township Board Trustees authorize the Township Fire Chief to hire a probationary shifted firefighter/paramedic, Corey Barney, and probationary non-shifted emergency medical technician Madison Daniski to be sheriff of Township Fire Department. Any questions or comments?
I want to look at this, is there a start date embedded in here?
You know, you said all the background and, um, protest and... It'll be all those back?
Yes, I was told by Doug Wright that yes, if you're asking that question, yes. I spoke with Doug today, and he said that, uh, the background checks came back, everything's good.
Okay, do we want to put a start date in this resolution? To allow for, uh, setting up the file, payroll, all that?
I'm okay with that, but do you guys, what date do you want to use, Monday?
I don't think that's enough time to get that done.
So, um, his, we're hiring tonight, right?
Yes.
So, his start date should be the day he actually meets with the fiscal officer to get signed in and signed up.
Okay.
So, we basically don't know that until we speak with her. But I think on there it says immediately, right? So that should cover whenever he get, whomever gets started.
I just don't want to get in a situation where they're recruiting hours, and they are not paid because they haven't been ordered on the system. We've dealt with enough of those that we just got to build time into the process. I know we need people, but they need to be paid.
I agree. So, does anyone know what is the, uh, what is the next, um, pay period, or when the next pay period starts?
It would just start at this...
This is the end of the, I think they get paid today.
So, it just started Monday? Because last Friday was the end of the pay cycle, the payroll, on the last Friday.
Okay.
So, the next pay cycle would start two weeks from Monday. The twenty-third.
The twenty-third?
What, start date five-twenty-three, Jim?
I mean, start date five-twenty-three, or, or when the fiscal officer says they're set up on payroll?
Either or.
Let's just not get ourselves in a situation where they show up for work and we're not set up for payroll.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-five.
Second.
Roll call vote, trustee McLaughlin is a yes. Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
And trustee back?
Yes.
Motion carries. And the start date, that has to be initial, can I change the date here from four to twelve? I didn't, we cut this, so I think that's initial that. Okay, so, the next resolution, um, is hiring a new administrator. That resolution was never brought up and tabled last meeting, so it does not have a number. So, the number we're starting with today is oh-three-eight, so this will be twenty-two oh-three-eight. Resolution number twenty-two dash oh-three-eight, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees appoint Chris Sander A. Goodwine as Township Administrator. Any questions, comments?
There were three people applied, two were family, and the other one was not.
Relatives of elected officials currently at Jefferson Township.
The two that did not get, were not interviewed were because of that reason?
I also want the record to reflect that Mr. McLaughlin stated he did not interview this person. I asked for an interview and never heard back from the outcome.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-eight.
A second.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee McLaughlin is a yes. Trustee McGuire?
No.
Trustee back?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so, that has to do with the resolutions that we had in executive session for, the hiring and employee situations. Also, in the posting, uh, for this special meeting, and what we talked about has to be posted. It's talked about a adding to discuss the additional, uh, the additional meeting to be held on the second Tuesday of every month. So, um, we have a resolution here, it'll be oh-three-nine. Resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-nine, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby announce a schedule change to the twenty-two trustee meeting's schedule. Adding an additional regular meeting to the second Tuesday of each month at seven P.M. Any questions or comments?
So, we got a commitment from the sheriffs to be here for this meeting?
They don't need to be here. They're here for the first meeting, so they don't need to be here for the second.
I disagree.
Okay.
Now, the way that you've got this worded, this is, you're going to lock it down and spell it.
Mr. McGuire, I do want to let you know that the legal, legal is all, all of that, they approved it, and so, whatever your issue is, take it up with legal.
No, this is, this is a just-in-case meeting, and you've got it, basically, it's probably going to be canceled more than it's held.
And so what? In fact, that's a good thing. If we really wait on that deal, we'll go down to one meeting.
I think it's confusing for the public.
How's it confusing? The first, second, and third Tuesday of the month now is a meeting. How's that confusing?
I think if we were more productive at our regular meetings, we wouldn't need this meeting.
Well, probably, who came to the meetings, Mr. McGuire, it would be more...
You can shoot all the daggers you want, trustee back. I mean, thirty-eight resolutions in five months?
You're the one questioning, you're questioning, you're questioning the meeting.
I don't like the fact that you're setting up a meeting and just in case. So, when we call meetings like a special meeting, there's purpose behind it. The other thing is, you, one of the arguments of doing this is to save money. So, the only thing that's happening is the expense for past, we're not paying day-to-day anymore to announce the meetings. So, that's a six-thousand-dollar-a-year expense that you guys took care of the first meeting of the year. So, uh... It's another seven minutes. And I'm not comfortable being in a meeting without security.
Okay, well, I'll move it.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash oh-three-nine.
A second.
Roll call, roll call vote, trustee McLaughlin votes yes. Trustee McGuire?
No.
Trustee back?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, so I have, anybody else have anything else?
Our meeting announcement also had a legal issue that needs to be decided tonight. Trustees, you have copies of this, we'll call it, uh, twenty-one dash oh-three-nine.
You said oh-three-nine?
Yeah, I think...
Probably just sign off to...
No, three-eight.
No, it's oh-three-nine.
Oh, oh, you did it.
Yeah.
All right, so, twenty-two dash zero-four-zero. Okay. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees hereby approve contracting for legal services with Dinkler Law Offices, LLC, regarding the pending litigation caption, M. Michael McLaughlin versus Jefferson Township Board of Trustees, Montgomery County Court of Common Employees, case twenty-twenty dash C.D. dash two-seven-six-seven. The reason that we have this resolution is because our insurance claim paying for our defense over the last two years has been exhausted. And this resolution now puts the expense on our books. The resolution reads that the prosecutor's office has already conflicted themselves out of the matter, so it does not line up with the resolution the two of you passed to run everything through the county prosecutor's office. I called them second time today to make sure that that had not changed, to verify that today's meeting. I also asked a question because we anticipated this resolution to hire the township administrator. The township administrator also cannot represent us in this matter because it's a case against a trustee, and that trustee is the administrator's boss.
Who are you talking about, hiring the administrator to do anything on this case? I don't know where you got that from.
Well, I'm just making sure that...
Oh, okay, okay.
We did inherent in-house counsel if we hired that township administrator, so...
No, sir.
That can't happen. So, what's going to happen? The work is stopped on this case. If we don't do anything with this, Ms. Dinkler is going to file a motion with the court, and that's going to put us, we'll have to go shopping for a new attorney, new expense to catch this up. Creates a whole new mess, but this is action against the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees, and we have a sworn duty to defend this. So, whether it's Lynette, or another attorney, the money is going to be the same. So, I make a motion to adopt twenty-two...
We were asking, so we was going to an executive session to talk about this.
Actually, legally shot it down, so... Because they can't be present for this, so... And that was not part of the meeting announcement.
You read off the resolution. Which then the title of the email said that this was not for public.
This resolution was written by Lynette Dinkler.
I don't know, but...
So, I have a different opinion there, and I'm not going to say much to the fact that, um... I don't, I don't agree with this, it just, it, um... My counsel has tried to end this already. And it can be ended.
Well, number one, Mr. McLaughlin, because you're the plaintiff in this, you don't have a vote in this...
That's correct.
Or an argument.
Okay.
And you should have talked to your attorney before you even spoke up in this meeting. Because you've got an interest, you're on the other side of the fence on this case. So, uh... Is there anything else you want to add to your comments?
Me? No, I'm sorry.
And to say that there was a settlement, you're talking, now you're talking...
I didn't say so.
You're talking legal strategy in an open meeting.
Did I use that word? Don't do it again.
Lord have mercy, can't we all just get along?
Trustees, the stakes are pretty high on this because one of the things of Mr. McLaughlin's complaint is if the township loses, we have to pay his legal fees. There's also an employee matter embedded in that complaint, and that could turn into a wrongful termination.
You're talking about a litigation in an open meeting, we should have gone into an executive session.
Thank you.
I'm not going to say it again.
You can't.
Yes, we can, when the attorney said to go into executive session, and trustee McLaughlin would not be allowed to go in because he's a conflict of interest.
You can't, it's, it's usually a mess in this back. It's going to be even messier if we've got to go looking for another attorney. This is, I see this as an either-or. We either continue with Dinkler, which, we've got a scheduling deadline coming up. This thing is supposed to be all submitted in July. That doesn't give us much time to turn this over to a new attorney, or we're going to pay a lot for that attorney to get up to speed with this, to do that. Probably going to jeopardize the case, so...
Mr. McGuire, you're not scaring me, I'm not going to sign anything until I...
I'm not scaring you, it's, it's a township action.
And I do not believe that we're supposed to be having this in an open meeting.
I haven't brought up anything that isn't already in public record, Mrs. Back.
Yeah.
So...
So...
So, I move to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash zero-four-zero.
How much money is that supposed to be for?
The way this reads is to take care of the case to the end.
No, I'm not going to sign nothing that says to the end, I need something on it.
We don't know how long this can go, because this could go to...
Well, we don't, but I'm not going to sign a blank check. Jefferson Township not going to go into bankruptcy paying an attorney. I need something that's a little bit more specific about how much money they talking about.
That's, that's predicting the end of the case, if we did that, we're at a rouse.
This is not a rouse, uh, trustee McGuire, this is May the twelfth at eight forty, okay?
You've had over a week to look at this, trustee back.
No, I haven't...
You're either helping Mike?
That has nothing to do with it, that's you and Mike's stuff.
Okay, you are...
That's yours argument, I don't have anything to do with that, okay?
You inherited this case the day you took office.
Well, and that's why, but that does not...
Because that's kind of check, you are a board of trustees.
But that does not mean that I have to hurry and sign a blank check.
How ma, you had a week to look at this, you've seen the emails with the attorneys. And you've been advised by counsel what this could cost if we lose.
I understand that, and, and, and my decision is made, but I will not sign something that says that the township is going to pay money for the next three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine years.
Well, the way the complaint reads, this thing's going to be final unless it goes to a, an appeal.
Well, I told you what I was going to do, now, either you come back with some numbers on there, or I'm not going to...
Well, this is what's going to happen.
Well, tell me what's going to happen.
Ms. Dinkler is asking for an answer tonight.
No, she was asking for an answer before.
She wants to know the outcome of this meeting.
Okay.
And then...
Please have her get in touch with me.
We don't have the luxury of deciding this.
Please have her get in touch with me.
So...
As a matter of fact, I'll call her. But you will not try to intimidate me to...
I'm not intimidating you, you've had a week, but you're stalling.
Yeah, you are, I'm not stalling.
You knew this was coming.
Whatever, Mr. McGuire.
The whole reason, you, you set up the meeting, you knew this resolution was going to be here. I don't think you showed up to the last meeting because you were afraid to deal with this yet, Mrs. Back.
Whatever, your paranoia is starting to get...
It's not paranoia.
Yeah, your paranoia is showing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm paranoid.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
We got to clean up this resolution here, so... For the record, is there a second or not? Okay, so...
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
We were adjourned, and she might have something to say. Oh.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, but I was adjourned yet.
Yes, um, so I just, you know, I just been listening, so I just wanted to chime in on some activities that I have been involved in through the township, and also, you know, of course, the board of trustees that have been involved as well. Um, so, this letter here is to the board of trustees. My name is Shantae Adams, I wanted to be present today's meeting to make, uh, to maybe view concerns for the residents of Jefferson Township and Montgomery County, and future residents. Today I'm expressing my interest in potential growth in the... Today I'm expressing my interest in potential growth and development in our neighborhoods. In late January, I attended a conference meeting with a former real, building and zoning employee of Jefferson Township. We discussed upcoming development plans, land usage, and residential inquiries. Early February, I began needing more information about the forms required for up, for an upcoming project. The conclusion to this process is obtaining documentation of approval before the project can proceed to the next stages. Jefferson Township is required to be in agreement before gathering any permits from Montgomery County. On March fourth, I received an auto return email from the previous board to, uh, direct, to please direct all zoning inquiries to trustee Jim McGuire. With this, with his email address and his phone number, reached out to him that day, March the fourth. McGuire responded March the twenty-third. Justin is no longer with the township and we will not be able to process any zoning applications until the position is built and advise to hire, and advise me to hire myself a zoning consultant. March the thirtieth, I extended an invitation to McGuire about an upcoming community cleanup at a local elementary school on Ox Avenue. The cleanup, uh, the first cleanup in April was a success, it was wonderful to see the local bright faces and sort of rebuilding. Uh, thank you to Ms. Back and, and Mr. McLaughlin. The ones that wanted to make community involvement a priority came. Our next cleanup is May the twenty-eighth, and I hope to see you there. Today, uh, in this meeting, uh, there was a discussion about the number of applications for zoning being asked and then, and there was a no number given. I didn't engage in the conversation and now being redirected to the township's website. I'd like to request to have an in-person scheduled meeting with at least two to three trustees in regards to moving forward in this process of necessary documentation considering this is my personal information and transit. I've already gotten nowhere and been running in circles for the past few months with township. Typically, when a problem is presented, a solution is suggested. One of the last inquiries was on, uh, four eleven, Ms. Back responded to reach out to McGuire, and I did and got no response. How do we move forward from this point? At this time, there has been more permitting success rather than assisting to an individual like myself that is dedicated to the growth of our community, especially when speaking about cleaning progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Bellwether, thank you. The need for this other person? Comments?
I'm sorry.
Any comments?
Well, she's gonna reach out, um, fill out the application on their website.
Okay.
And, and be able to look at-